For Thursday, June 4th, 2020, before we start, Mike, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Jennifer?
Yes, I can hear you guys.
All right, perfect. All right, if we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so Planning Board members present tonight, we have the Vice Chair, Nicole Fecto. Via Zoom, we have regular member, Mike LaRue. We have alternate David Ross Lyons. Access tonight is Sean Winston, also Frank Underwood. So David, you'll be a voting member tonight. Moving on to the public comment session, public comment is open to anybody who's a resident or property owner in the town of Burwick to come forward and talk about anything under the purview of the Planning Board. We do have two public hearings tonight. You're free to come up during public comment, but for the sake of, you know, keeping everything organized, we have these public hearings that you can come up and talk about that. But if you have anything else that you'd like to come up and speak about, public comment session's open.
It's the next one.
So we do have a public hearing for the, for two applications tonight. You're free to come talk at the public comment session if you want, but we are going to have a chance for you to come for the public hearing. It's two different things.
Thank you.
James, is anybody in the waiting room?
No, there's no one there, no one here for general public comment.
Okay, seeing nobody come forward, close the public comment session. Moving on to the approval of the amendments for the May 21st, 2020 meeting.
So one thing, James, on page five, it said that I abstained. I was actually opposed to that vote.
Okay, gotcha.
Also under new business, it says voted five zero in favor, and there's only four people in favor.
Got that, James?
Got it. Thanks, Nick.
Anything else? Okay, so the motion will be for the approval of the minutes as amended.
I move we approve as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second further discussion. All right, roll call vote. Nicole Fecto.
Abstain.
Mike LaRue.
I'm abstaining too. I wasn't there.
Okay, David Ross Lyons.
Yes.
And I vote yes, and that's two zero, so the minutes are not approved for this meeting. So we'll have to, we'll have to.
Reapproved.
Yeah, we'll have to come back at the next meeting when we have Sean and Frank. Okay, next on the agenda is the public hearing, site plan review, adult use marijuana cultivation facility, 11 Pond Road map, R70 lot 16. It's in the RCI zone and the applicant is CAF Realty of Maine. This is a public hearing to discuss this application only. If you're a resident or property owner, in this town, you can come forward right now. And I'd just like to ask if you could keep your comments to, for initially for five minutes, and then after everybody's had a chance to come up and talk, then we can open that back up again, and you'll have, you'll have another opportunity to come back up. So sometimes after you go after five minutes, people start, their minds start wandering. So what's going to happen is we'll take questions down and comments, and then we will, when we get to the application and old business, we'll ask the applicant to answer those questions and address those comments. So, public hearing is open for this application. Feel free to come forward to the podium. And if you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, so we are Allison and.
Jerry Graybill.
And we live at 10 Pond Road, which is in a butter to 11 Pond Road. We live right across the street. We will need more time. I think our comments are greater than the five minutes, so just wanted that to be noted. So we would like to state that for the record, we do oppose this project. We are in opposition for the following reasons. We see that there are some legal issues in regards to the road access, the bank easement, the sewer easements. We're concerned about the impact on the water supply, whether it's for the residents or the town of Burwick's water supply. South Burwick, thank you. We're concerned about the safety and security. We have concerns about the odor and the overall negative impact on the neighborhood. So the first issue that we'd like to discuss is the road access. And in one of our letters, we stated the language for frontage, and it states, that states what we're, pardon me, but what we're asking is if that gravel driveway, which is now being turned into a road, will serve as a legal access to the lot. And so in that description, option A, it says that the following ways constitute legal access to a lot, A, a way accepted by or established as belonging to the town, the county, or the state. So we've seen other roads on, on, other driveways on Pond Road that are quite long, and those have actually been designated as streets. And so we're, we're questioning that that needs to be done here as well. And what we're really concerned about is if there were to be a fire and someone calls and says, there's a fire at 11 Pond Road, there's already three residential apartments, and so we'd want that to be clearly designated. It's really pretty, you know, it doesn't look like a road now. So we would want that to be clear so that access could be provided to that facility quickly. So that leads us to the bank easement, the entrance of that driveway is owned by the bank. There's an easement that's in place. That, I'll just read part of it. It says the said easement may be used on foot or for vehicles, excluding oil trucks or other vehicles carrying any potentially hazardous materials, except for oil trucks delivering residential heating oil to the guarantees residence. And then it goes on to talk about liability insurance, which I won't get into. So based on our research of the marijuana processing process, and based on the applicant's application that says that growing, harvesting, and processing will be occurring in the buildings, that this process does produce potentially hazardous waste. And so we feel that using this now road to deliver waste out from the facility to be disposed of would not be permitted. And during one of the sit walks, we did learn that a dumpster truck would be coming in and removing waste from the property. Sewer easements, as a follow-up to Heidi and Marlene's letter, and also at the discussion of the last public hearing, we are wondering if the issues raised about the sewer easements have been resolved. Does the easement allow for a road to be constructed over the sewer pipes of 13 Pond Road? And also, is it permissible for the applicant to run his sewer electrical feed through the existing easements for 13 Pond Road? Based on the revised plans, it also appears that the second building would be being built over the sewer easement and the pipes of 13 Pond Road. So therefore, we ask that the Planning Board do not, does not consider making decision on this application until those, until the sewer easement issues have been ratified. The thousand-foot radius, we did receive information from the revised plan that shows that the two proposed buildings are outside the thousand-foot radius from the school. We really appreciate the effort that went in to provide that supporting documentation. We do have some comments about the thousand-dollar radius. We did not receive the thousand-foot radius in regards to Kind Farms.
Well, we found out with Kind Farms, Kind Farms building that's there right now is for the commercial sale of medical marijuana, which is proposed to change to also recreational. They have two lots there. The driveway that's into that property splits the two lots. The second lot is proposed to have a production facility built on that. Depending on where on that lot that production facility is placed, it then encroaches on the thousand-foot radius of the applicant for 11 Pond Road, and that needs to be taken into consideration as well. Because it's the thousand-foot building to building per the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Impact on the water supply, due to this being an aquifer for the town of Burwick's water supply, we're, South Burwick, sorry. We are wondering if the DEP has been contacted to see if a DEP permit is required. We're concerned about the impact on the existing wells from runoff from the impervious materials, and we've read the recommendations from the town of South Burwick Water District, and we request that the Planning Board approve those recommendations.
So along the same guidelines, the DEP has what is called under Chapter 700, the Wellhead Protection Plan, and in there, it lists private drinking water wells, which there are two within basically 300 feet of this site, and it says here, in case of private drinking water wells within 300 feet, they shall not be allowed. So that needs to be looked into as well through the DEP, we feel.
Okay, coming up on six minutes, do you have a lot more?
No.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, continue. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Safety and security. So we are wondering if the fire, police, and rescue departments for the town of South Burwick and Burwick, if they've provided responses to the safety and security of the project, and if they have, will those be provided to the public and what was their response? Crime, we are concerned about an increasing criminal activity in the neighborhood. This is a lucrative cash crop, and a four-foot fence would really not deter anyone if they really wanted to access the facility. And I just wanted to remind people that in 2016, the ATM for the bank right next to the property, which is essentially a vault with an alarm system, was robbed, and thousands, thousands upon ten thousands of dollars were stolen. So it was really the first time that we felt a little uncomfortable in our neighborhood due to activity like that. So what is so challenging about this project is that this building is being put among residential homes, so it just feels atypical. It's not like Rice's, it's going up on the way. It's not like Trican. It really is among where we live.
If I can add something to that, the Kind Farm facility that's across the road, we've sat and watched, and you have cars coming from New York, Vermont, Connecticut, Rhode Island.
Massachusetts.
Massachusetts, and New Hampshire into that facility all day long. And I've witnessed almost two accidents while we were watching, because people don't know where it is. They're coming down the road, and all of a sudden, they slam on the brake, and the person behind them is not paying attention. So not only is it the facility at 11 Pond Road, but Kind Farms also causing issues within our neighborhood with how the state people be in our area now that we did not have before.
Okay, I'm just going to ask you to wrap your comments up. Are you all set?
No, I'll come back.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right, this is the public hearing for the adult use marijuana cultivation facility at 11 Pond Road. If you'd like to take part in public, the public hearing, please come forward to the podium.
Hello, my name is Duncan here, and I live at 2 Pond Road in Burwick. And I'd like to begin by stating that according to Burwick's land use ordinance, marijuana production facilities in the RCI zone are conditional. So far, no one has been able to articulate what value this venture will bring to our community. Multiple real estate agents have said this will not increase the value of a butter's property, nor those in the immediate neighborhood. I have also yet to receive an answer as to how this will financially benefit the town as a whole. Will there be monies raised for our schools or roads? Will our property taxes be lowered because of any sort of increased revenue generated? Will there be any revenue generated if there's no retail sales happening? Furthermore, according to the Burwick Town website, in regards to the land use ordinance, I'm going to quote, "The purpose of this ordinance is to promote the health, safety, and general welfare of the residents of the town," end quote. I would strongly urge the members of the Planning Board to remember which people here are residents of the town and what their viewpoints are. At a time when more and more Americans are feeling their voices not being heard at a federal or state level, we are told to participate in our local government. Again, I would strongly urge the members of the Planning Board to remember who here are their constituents they are theoretically beholden to. Next, I would like to make it clear that I am in fact in favor of the legalization of marijuana. What I am not in favor of is trying to shoehorn a commercial enterprise into a neighbor's backyard. While our neighborhood may be zoned RCI, I would ask anyone here to simply drive down our roads and look at what you see, farms and families' houses. Plain and simple, you do not see an industrial parkway. You may have noticed, as I did immediately upon inspection, that the proposed building would be directly behind one of our neighbor's houses. I find this to be unacceptable just so that one person can profit. There is also the highly questionable intimidation tactics which the owner of 11 Pond Road has engaged in with both the owners of 13 Pond Road and 11 Perry's Way, which I would describe as deplorable in regards to the building of a road over their septic pipes, as well as running his own electrical and sewer lines through 13 Pond Road's easement area. I would assert that a person who does such things does not care about a community's health, safety, or general welfare. I would ask anyone here how they would feel if they or a loved one lived in 13 Pond Road. This is in no way acceptable for them, and surely the Planning Board members would not allow this to happen to their own residences or to those of their families. So they must duly act according, accordingly so, accordingly so as to not allow this to happen to fellow community members. Allowing this to happen would show the, show the community as a whole that the town of Burwick government cares more about bending over backwards to accommodate an out-of-state landlord than its own residents. Surely, given the aforementioned voter disenfranchisement, this is not what the elected and/or appointed town officials want to be known for. The community has already been made to play from behind in this whole process. Personally, along with other neighbors, I was only made aware of this project a few days before the failed Zoom meeting. I was then never granted entry into that Zoom meeting. Then, along with the rest of my neighborhood, we were only given the builders' incomplete responses to our concerns, again, only days before a meeting, which we were told we could not attend together, even though the governor has now allowed for gatherings of up to 50 people. I do not find these circumstances to be fair and equitable in regards to how the town has treated its own citizens compared to one man who stands, stands to profit from building in our neighborhood. Given the totality of the circumstances at hand, the fact that the builders cannot or have not addressed everything they need to in order to legally build their enterprise, the fact that they have not shown how this project will in any way bring value to our community, their ruthless intimidation tactics used against our neighbors, the appearance of the town has shown gross favoritism to an out-of-state landlord instead of its own community members. There can only be one conclusion. This project cannot be allowed to be completed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gauthier. This is a public hearing for the adult use marijuana cultivation facility at 11 Pond Road.
My name is Paul Ametucci. My wife, Deborah, and I live at 12 Perry's Way. Front door of our home looks at this property across the field. So I think basically what we're, what we're here for is we do not want this facility. We definitely don't want this facility. And I also think that there are enough outstanding questions here today that there should be no decision, no final decision made today, because there are just too many things that are just wild cards in this. They may be wild cards even if this project is allowed to go forward, so, and under what conditions it would be allowed to go forward. So I think we, to, to push this forward today with a vote, I think would not do us, do this justice. One of the issues, as all three people have, have mentioned previously, is the sewer easement over the septic. And is it permissible, is it not permissible, without the permission of the easement holder? And I know that as of late this afternoon, the McDonald Leviates have, have a letter into the Planning Board and, and the town planner concerning that. So, so there is a, a legal question there, which is saying, basically what we're saying, that without the permission of the easement holder, this should not go forward. There's been a lot said, and I think I said it about three or four meetings ago, about odor. Odor is something that's insidious. It just happens. You can't stop it. You can't, there's not enough candles that I can light to get rid of that odor. And that odor is skunk-like odor. There is every single facility of this kind that's been put up in this country, including those in Colorado, in California, up, up in the mountains, that give odor. Now, you can say, I'm going to use state-of-the-art activated charcoal filters, and that's fine. There is more, there is more distance that you can go. You can go to negative pressure systems, so that when you open that door, no air comes out, it all comes in, all rushes into the building. So nothing gets out. And still with that, unless you change those filters, odor, odor will seep out of that building. So odor is a big issue, and it, it's more of an issue where this property is sitting, because where this property is sitting is in the middle of a residential neighborhood with very small children all over the place, bicycles being run, scooters being run. So, so this is not the kind of area where we want this to happen. There's been a lot of talk about the wetlands, and so far as I know, we haven't had DEP weigh in on this. I think DEP has to weigh in on this before we can move forward here. And lastly, I'll just say something about property values. I saw the responses from the applicant about kind of a grid, here's what the property values are, low and high, and that sort of thing. And I happen to be in the real estate mortgage business, so I know a little bit about this. And when you are a real estate agent, you must disclose. It's, it's unlawful not to disclose to a potential buyer what's going on in that neighborhood. So there's, there's a, a reason for that, and that is because it affects property values. And we don't know enough about how property values are affected by production facilities for marijuana, too. But it is intuitive that it will put a negative effect on our property values. People who've put an awful lot of money into their homes will lose that, that equity in their homes. So that, that's, that's a big issue. So I just want to say, to sum, sum this up by saying, number one is, we should not be rushing to judgment tonight. This should not happen tonight, that there is more that needs to be disclosed and, and analyzed. And the other thing is that I'm totally and 100% against this facility going up in our neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ametucci. All right, before we open up the second round, James, you have people in the waiting room?
We got one more.
Oh yeah, we have one more here.
Nope, there's a.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Everyone, everyone's in. The growers of the application and the other butter's are in.
Okay, ma'am, you're next.
I believe we have folks in the other, your office too, that might want to, right?
No.
Alan? He doesn't want to speak. Hi, Heidi Levy, owner at 11 Perry's Way and 13 Pond Road, a co-owner with my mom, Marlene McDonald, who is a joint owner at 13 Pond Road. And she's apologizing for not being able to be here tonight. She's just been really under the weather for the past month or so. So yeah, I too, I can speak on behalf of myself and Marlene, and we both oppose this project for all the reasons stated by our neighbors earlier today. I did want to apologize to Mr. Air for the length of time it has taken me to respond to his notice about the easement for the septic. I have been out of work and not monitoring my email due to extended bereavement leave for the loss of my husband. That email count is, got thousands of emails. I did, and his email did come to my attention just a bit ago, and I, we immediately jumped on it and have retained a lawyer to investigate further the legality of the use of that easement. And I apologize to the town for the delay in getting the lawyer to submit a letter on our behalf. It just came through probably in a couple hours before this meeting. So because you probably haven't had a chance to see it, it's just an email. He's working on a more detailed letter, but he is stating that he is representing us, and he too wanted to object to having this hearing tonight because he did think it was inconsistent with the Freedom of Access Act in that all the folks that attended the sit walks, which were numerous, should have had the opportunity to be voiced in public. We understand COVID is challenging, but considering the multifactor level of issues with this project, he was hoping that other folks would, would have the opportunity to be heard face-to-face. But second, he's saying that the proposal in its current form would construct a road over a sewer line for which we hold an easement, me, meaning me and my mom. The applicant does not have the right title or interest to construct that road in that spot, because the proposed use of that road would overburden the integrity of the lines. As a servient estate subject to the easement, the applicant's right to use and approve the land is qualified by the easement holder's rights, which in this instance take precedent. An engineer's statement that the road will not threaten the integrity of the line is biased, transparent, ipse dixit. I say so, so it's true. That is not based on good engineering, does not respect the rights affected, and would have the town look the other way rather than give a hard look to independently review and regulate the proposal. He says, again, he's only just begun his review of the proposal, but what he has learned to date raises serious questions about whether the site plan review is being faithfully undertaken and whether public concerns are being heard. So we are not in agreement that the road could be built over my mom's septic's pipes. And we've, we stated that in a letter submitted to the town, oh gosh, probably a couple months ago now. We had consulted with friends that were lawyers at that point that did not specialize in land use or easements, and it was their understanding as well that, that a road could not be built over the pipes. So to be sure that those attorneys were correct, we have retained a lawyer that specializes in easements.
Okay, Mrs. Levy, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay.
You're going to have another opportunity to come back up.
Okay. Then, really, I'm about done. I just also just wanted to state, it's our understanding that in our zone, it's, these things are conditional approval, and I agree that in order to be a conditional approval, you'd think that property values would have to be maintained or increased for a project. And I've talked to several real estate agents, a couple that are actually going to be sitting, submitting a letter to y'all with estimates on what the surrounding properties are, taking a dip in, in, in property values too. And then finally, odor. I know you guys said you'd take a hard stand that it would be zero tolerance, but my son attends an Dalton School. I can't drive down that route with my window down, because the facility over there is very odorous. And I brought that up to the town, and they said they were aware, but there was no licenses requirements at the moment, but when they were, that, you know, licenses wouldn't be reviewed. But in the meantime, we are suffering to smell it. And with the Kind Farms went coming, I'm faced with walking out of my property, turning right, getting a lift, no matter which way the wind blows, we're going to have odor. I do an about face, it's going to come through, and we'll have to sit there and wait for the town's, you know, yearly renewal to enforce that. So that's a lot of months to have to sit there and deal with that, that odor. So thank you for your time.
Can you hold the rest for round two?
Say again?
Can you hold the rest for, oh, you are, okay. All right, feel free to come back up round two if you want.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so if you've previously spoken and you want to come back up, the Graybills.
Okay, well, our neighbors did a great job with the other items we were going to talk about, so we won't repeat, except just fully endorse their concerns about the odor. So we'd like to wrap up with just some requests of the Planning Board. We'd like to ask that a peer review be done of this proposal. Throughout this process, there's been a number of discrepancies, first starting with a thousand-foot radius from the school, which we asked for a few times to have that redone. So because of that discrepancy, we'd like a third party to come in and review this application. Other discrepancies were around the 250-foot buffer with the wetlands. We would like a third party to address the concerns of the impact on the water, and also review any engineering solutions that would be proposed through this proposal. We also asked that the Planning Board consider a zero tolerance with the odor, with the odor, and that if odor was to be, if the facility was to be permitted to produce marijuana and odor does occur, that production be shut down until the odor could be rectified. Due to all the issues with the sewer easements, we asked that an approval not be. Due to all the issues with the sewer easements, we asked that an approval not be submitted and, uh, an approval not occur until those, uh, items are resolved. Also, we'd like it to be considered that if water is contaminated due to the production occurring at the site, that it be the applicant's responsibility to bear the, bear the cost to rectify the problem, and that a specific deadline on when that would be rectified be included in that. We also asked to receive more information on the scope of the project. The application was very limited in explaining what will be occurring at the site. It stated that they will be growing, harvesting, and processing. And when we did the, um, we did the research, it seems like the chemical process will really be heavy in the processing piece, depending on his approach. And since it will be in our backyard, we would really like to know what was, uh, what would be going on. Uh, we asked that the planning board consider restricting the size of the buildings. The original proposal was, um, up to four buildings at that site. It's been restricted down to two based on most recent plan that we've seen. And we asked that there be a height restriction, so in case the applicant is looking to achieve the same results of four buildings by building up high, that there be limitations placed on the size of the buildings. And then lastly, we requested the public hearing be continued and kept open to allow further public comment on any new information submitted to the planning board. So lastly, I just had some housekeeping items I wanted to, um, mention. I noticed that Heidi's original letter dated 4/16, uh, isn't part of the public record, and we just asked that that be, uh, included in the public record. Ben's letter that he sent in a couple days after the last public hearing hasn't been posted to the public file, and we asked that that be included as well. And then the applicant had, had submitted some amendments to his original application prior to the last public hearing that had to do with, um, grid. I think it was, hold on, I can tell you. Grading, he, he had submitted a revised grading and landscape plans, and I didn't see that those were submitted as part of the public file as well. So I just asked that all documents be made, made available to the public.
James, you got that?
Sure, sure.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Grayville.
Great, thank you very much.
All right, this is the, um, public hearing for site plan review, adult use marijuana cultivation facility, 11 Pond Road. Anybody else like to come forward? Mr. Ametucci? Are you here for, anybody else for the public hearing? All right, seeing nobody come forward, I'm gonna keep the public hearing open for this application. Moving on to public hearing for site plan amendment, commercial storage, 387 School Street, map R54 lot 4. It's in the R2 zone, the applicant is PK Storage LLC. This is a public hearing, just to talk about this application out on School Street, we had a site walk out there tonight.
It's really just Neil in the waiting room, so-
Is Neil in the waiting room?
He can just stay in the waiting room.
He made it, he made it back to Alton in time, that's good.
You can bring Neil out, but-
I'm gonna say hi to him.
Yep, is there anybody here for the, uh, public hearing for the, uh, PK Storage expansion?
As far as I'm concerned, I'd rather see him here with all kinds of people, he had said just a few. Most of the other people can put their, put their Drew center up then.
All right, seeing nobody come forward for the public hearing, I'll close that public hearing. Moving on to, uh, old business, site plan review, adult use marijuana cultivation facility, 11 Pond Road, map R78 lot 16. It's in the RCI zone, the applicant is CAF Realty of Maine. Um, I know there's a lot of confusion, I know there was some, uh, there was a letter from a lawyer about the public hearing. Uh, when we had the first public hearing with this applicant, it was kinda going off the rails, so I stopped at, and then I wanted to have something, uh, present here. We can't have, we, we can't have, uh, all these people in here. This is the way that we have to do this. Governor Janet Mills said this is the way that we can run these hybrid type of public hearings, that we have to do the best that we can. We had a long discussion, the whole entire board and the staff at town here about, we're just gonna put everything on hold for three months, and we have a backlog of things now. So we have to make the best of what, the tools that we have. And I know it's not convenient for a lot of people, I know people don't like Zoom. Uh, it's, I don't like it, that's why I'm here right now. Um, so, but those things have been worked out, and I know you're talking about Freedom of Information Act, uh, things like that, but the governor has given the go-ahead for these virtual meetings. As difficult as it is for everybody, and that's why we're keeping these meetings open. So, all right. James, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, that was my first point too, and not many, I mean, one of the few that are actually meeting in person. So there's a lot of issues to go through. Um, I think the, the first thing is there is a real, uh, civil issue with the easement, and I, I would agree of on continuing the public hearing, and my suggestion would be that's the, um, the first meeting we have in July, that's actually July, I think it's 16th, because we're not meeting the, the first week of July.
Correct.
So with all that in mind, I'll just go down some of the comments. You'll see in the findings of fact that I think that's on, online, where the table I had for Google Sheets that I shared with everybody, I revised it, it's on, online now. And I'll just go through the pieces that were, were touched upon tonight. So the first, first point was about the, um, legal access, and the legal access comes from Pond Road. The, um, the definition that Allison read is the definition of frontage, and frontage is just specifically, uh, dimensional requirement.
Yep, yes, yes.
So that's just defining the, the, um, so he has the frontage on Pond Road where he can bring the driveway in. So if there's more questions on that, I think we have more time to talk about it, if you have more questions on it. Um, in terms of property values, for, for me, there's just no, there's just no way to distinguish between any allowed commercial building going in. The property value might, it's speculative, but there is one standard that I could see being considered in the findings of fact, that's number 16, that's a planning board determination. Will not have adverse effects on the scenic or natural beauty of the area. Aesthetics are rare and irreplaceable natural areas. But in terms of property values, I really don't, um, see any standing. Nicole, I know, has been studying the comp plan, so maybe she's, she's found something where if it's something with a comp plan, that'd be the, the finding number one. So on odor control, I know 398 School Street, I was driving by maybe a week ago and I got a whiff. I have not, we have not received a formal complaint yet at the town hall.
James, 11 Pond Road we're talking about.
Got you.
Yeah.
Let's not talk about him.
Got you. So, um, in terms of odor control, I would recommend that a negative vacuum pressure environment is included because that is the, that's the gold standard, is the carbon filtration, is the negative pressure. The thousand foot setback, a stamp survey was provided from the Montessori School, um, and Mike used a thousand foot setback from the property line of Kind Farms. So that's, it seems to me that'd be a conservative, um, measurement. And there was a question about, um, there's a, Paul Vannuti wants to come back.
We gotta skip, yeah.
Yeah, so-
That's, if there's no application, we can't talk about it.
Right, they're first, they're first.
Opposed application, yeah.
Um, so the well, wellhead protection, I have not looked into that. That's something that I can look into and find the answer for that by, if we do continue the public hearing. On the crime issue and the fence issue, I know there's, there's a four-foot fence and it was a barbed wire. Is there anything else we could do with the, the fencing? It's, it's something that I was, um, just wondering as a discussion point for the board. Um, in term, again, so for the, um, driving over the septic pipe and the easements and the, the restrictions, it totally seems like a civil issue to me in terms of the actual deeds. But in terms of driving over it, that could be a place where we bring in a third-party engineer, where he shows the plans for the road and the precautions that they would take for the, the actual pipe. The other thing that I, a question for Mike is, the driveway and the basin are within a 250-foot, uh, wetland setback. So I would be curious on an environmental opinion, that could be another third party that looks at that as well. So South Berwick has been aware of this application since February 19th, um, and we did receive a, a memo from the fire chief, and you guys have that letter.
Do you wanna see? Do you wanna sit down?
Yeah.
Okay, grab a seat back there, yeah, have a seat, please.
Is it too late to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
The next public hearing.
So I think that, that covers the points that were touched upon. I have some other things, but I feel like they'll, they'll probably come up when the applicants come up and speak.
Could you just address something on findings of fact?
Yep.
Says the project conforms slash does not conform to.
That would just be whatever the finding for the board is based off of the discussions for tonight, if there was a decision made tonight.
Okay. All right, all right, I'll turn it over to the applicant. If you want to come to the podium, just state your name.
I'm Mike Severt with MJS Engineering. I'm representing, uh, David Ayer, the owner of, uh, CAF Realty and the property, um, for this facility. Um, since we were here last time, we have redesigned the facility, and the reason for that is the, um, the 250-foot setback, uh, from, which is the shoreline, from the, uh, upland, most edge of the freshwater wetlands, which we have delineated here, and those were delineated by, um, uh, the wetland scientist, Mike Cuomo. So we're confident that the, uh, 250-foot setback is correct based on his delineation. And that was different from the, um, official plan. James and I went over that, and so there was some discrepancy in there, and that's why this change is here. Once we put the thousand-foot setback from the Montessori School, that changed the setback from the, uh, northerly side, and so, um, this is why you see the, um, reduction in the buildings and then the, the, we've moved the buildings back away from the property and brought the road across to the front, uh, front side there. And then kinda consolidated everything. As far as the, you know, I don't, I'm not gonna, I, I can't address the sewer, you can drive over sewer pipes, um, we do it all the time, in, in every town. And you can put a road over an easement. I don't believe that this easement can restrict my client from using his property, so, um, it doesn't say that in the, the easement language there. I have a design for a, um, concrete encasement with a sleeve in there, uh, so that would protect the pipe, and if that pipe ever had to be, um, repaired or anything, you would just cut it, pull it out, slide it back through the sleeve, you wouldn't even have to dig up the road or, or anything.
What's the width of the road? Cause I know that was a concern with Chief's plan.
It's 20 feet.
20 feet, okay.
And, um, I think we got a comment from the fire department, if I'm not mistaken, about, and I think where they said they were concerned about the, the existing driveway coming off Pond Road, I, I believe that's about 13 feet wide, and, and so we would widen that to 20 feet.
Right, yeah.
Not a problem. Um, that would be pulled on to, um, my client's property, that easement, um, and that language in that easement does not restrict access to this facility, uh, in any stretch of the imagination. And so that whole access out through there is well over 20 feet wide, and then a proper, um, designation of the buildings and the building numbers for fire department could easily be put on there. And I believe one of the other comments by the fire department was about the gate, and we do have a, uh, we would provide a Knox box at the gate for the fire department access and so forth, so, um, I, I think when we reviewed the shoreline, I, I, if, if I'm not mistaken, roads are acceptable in there, so I don't think that's a problem with that road in there. I don't see why stormwater treatment would be, that's what you would require in that zone to properly treat stormwater. You can see we've moved the stormwater, we had the stormwater treatment system over here, and that was because, um, of the way it was designed before, all the water was going more towards the north. Now we'll bring all the water kinda straight down to the, uh, east, and, and then right off the end of that and in, into the stormwater pond there. So the same pond design is there, it's just been slid over and reconfigured. So all of the runoff from, um, uh, impervious surfaces will be collected and treated in the stormwater pond, and that would meet all the requirements. The second building there, um, so I, I understand the, the easement issues, um, the, the real problem here is the septic system is outside of the easement right now. So the septic system, uh, of the abutting lot is not even in, in its easement. The easement is incorrectly recorded, uh, which is, I'm, I'm sure is just an oversight, but in, in our, um, in my surveyor's, um, survey and research, he found that the easement is incorrectly recorded, and the one that's recorded at the registry is the easement that you see on this plan. Um, there is another easement, but it's not recorded, and, um, as you can see, this, the force main that goes up through here is, is not within the easement at all, and there's the, the neighbor's leach field, which is completely outside of the recorded easement. So my client is offering to straighten that out and switch the easement over, um, because it's already written, it's just not properly, it, it's just an oversight, I believe. So we can make that change without a problem, but, um, you know, to, but that doesn't restrict him from using the rest of his property, and, and we can drive over, uh, that easement without negatively impacting, and, and we're certainly not driving over any leach fields or anything like that, so, um, I think that can all be taken care of, um, and I think it's just kind of an, an error, like I said, so.
We also got the question, the DE per, DEP permit being in the vicinity, because this project's in the vicinity of the South Berwick, Agnifor.
Sure.
So.
Yeah, well, I guess we'll look into that. I didn't, when we looked into the DEP, um, for this size of the treatment system and so forth, it didn't appear that it was necessary, but if it is-
Well, that's something that we can get from, from planning too. You can talk to, you know, you could figure that out too, and see what the requirement for that is, but I know we've run into issues with other projects out there on Route 4, um, with the DEP, because it's, and South Berwick has expressed concern, you know, with Knights Pond and all that.
Sure. Um, we did get that, uh, letter from the South Berwick Water Department. Again, this well, it's a, it's, um, a couple hundred gallons per day, 200 gallons per day, plus or minus for the, for the building. So it's a pretty small use of the water here. We have the proper, um, well radiuses on there. Um, all the septics are, uh, outside of those well radiuses, and we do have the completed, um, new septic design, um, for this parcel, including this building and the six employees and, uh, the five apartments. I think it's five apartments in there. So that's all set.
There's three.
Three right now.
Right now.
That's been done by, um, that's been completed by Mike Cuomo, so that, and so that's, that's been filed, and I believe that's all set to go. Um, the only other thing that I, you know, this is, I, I'm pretty sure all these plans, you've seen all these plans.
We have.
We have them right in front of us.
Um, so I won't bore you with any more of the information, except I did have the landscape architect, actually, um-
Right, yeah, we've, yeah, we've seen, I, I wanted to just take some questions from the board right now, so I'll start off with Nicole.
Where do I begin?
Our question from Frank, by the way.
Okay, well, let's begin with me and end with Frank. First, for the public, um, I'm, I'm a little taken aback that the public thinks that, um, the applicant has been given an advantage, um, because they certainly have not, and I think we are really good at remaining neutral and listening to everything. We've listened to more from the public on this application than just about any application, and that's in writing, that's at sidewalks, that's at public hearings, so please know that you are being heard. We don't react to you, it's not our job to react. Our job is to take in the information, make sure that it all goes with the comprehensive plan, that's our job. And we're all volunteers here too, FYI. Um, other than that, so in the comp plan, on page 83, there is, um, a statement that said, uh, says that just part of the comp plan is to make sure that there's a townwide minimization of negative impacts from business. And like I said, we've been hearing since the beginning of April on this, so it's June, um, for, for months and months, and I see a townwide negative impact from this business, and that's just my interpretation of the comp plan. I do like the idea of a condition, if this is approved, uh, for the height of the buildings. I do like the idea of a condition, if this is approved, for the height of the buildings. And I asked Dave earlier, Chairman Andreessen, if the town attorney had reviewed this. Has the town attorney reviewed this?
I have, he will be engaged.
No, he has, he has reviewed, he has reviewed several things when it comes to this. The emails that Lee J had sent me about a month ago.
Yep.
That he has reviewed, not only the meeting, whether or not we can hold the meetings this way, also the proximity to the Montessori School, the proximity to Kind Farms, and also the proposed, what we thought was a proposed childcare facility in South Berwick.
Yep, and I'll be speaking with him more.
Please do, because obviously the plans keep changing, so as the plan changes, the attorney needs to review again. And then I am also in favor of a third-party review of this whole thing. I will say that whether it's marijuana or if it was a horse barn, either one would, I mean, like a horse barn would actually fit in with the neighborhood there, but still cause just as much odor, so I just, I don't know.
Do you have questions for the applicant?
I don't have any questions for the applicant at all.
Okay, David?
I don't have any questions for the applicants, but I mean, my concerns are mirrored by yours. The negativity that we're hearing from the community, whether it be out on the streets or wherever, it's there.
Okay. Michael?
Yeah, I kind of have a couple statements. One is, I went to the sidewalk and where I parked was close to 13 Pond Road, I think it was, and there's, across the street, there's a horse stall and I could smell that, I could smell that all the way up on top of the hill. So I have a feeling that a lot of this, if there, if there would be any smell permeating from that building, that that horse stall would probably cover a lot of it. Also with the drainage of, if everything goes into a tank and gets sucked out, I mean, I don't think there's gonna be that much of an issue with water like leaking, because they're gonna be sucking it all out.
Do you have anything else, Mike?
Other than that, nope.
Okay, thank you. James, I think that we need to, if you can ask the town manager if we can order a site plan review for this, and that, excuse me, a peer review for this. There's a few more questions that have to be answered. As it stands right now, I am not in favor of this application. I do not think that this should be in a residential neighborhood. I know it's in the RCI district. It's going to severely affect the, well, like Mr. Gauthier said, the health, safety, and general welfare of the town. And I think I have never voted against an application because it's fit and this one I've agonized over for probably a month and a half. And I've spoken with James, I've spoken with Lee J Feldman from Southern Maine Planning, I've spoken with the town attorney to do the due diligence, because I know we have a property owner that wants to put something there, but it does not fit, in my opinion, does not fit in the Berwick, within the Berwick Comprehensive Plan. However, I want to allow the applicant the, that's just me, I want to allow the applicant the opportunity to get the peer review done and see where we can, I want to give you your due process, just like these people owe their due process. So that's the way that I feel about that right now, so. So please engage Steve tomorrow about the, now, does the applicant have any, do you have anything else, sir? At this point?
I don't think so.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Uh-uh.
Good. This is a, this, my six years on the planning board, this has probably been the longest application that's been pending and the most, that needs to be reviewed very, very carefully to give everybody their due process, so. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, moving on. In old business, site plan review, solar array, essential services and construction over 3,000 square feet, 193 Route 236, it's in the R, or, excuse me, it's a map, R66 Lot 6A, it's in the R3 Zone and the applicant is Berwick Solar LLC. James, do we have anybody here for this?
Yep, we got, the Diggins are loading in right now under Butch.
And if you came for this after the last application, you don't need to feel compelled to stay. We won't be offended if you leave.
No.
Hi, Davidson.
It's not exciting, huh? I think we, I think we have openings on the board if you guys want.
All right, James, I'll turn it over to you on this.
Yeah, I can cover some of this stuff. So since, so since the last meeting, the applicants have submitted a new decommissioning plan that's pretty solid with the conditions of approval. See, Mike?
Yep, thank you.
I guess. Have a good night. They've submitted a new landscaping plan with a new narrative and they did, they planted the plantings in a way that's natural as requested by staff. Let's see. They did provide the solar panel certifications for the safety, environmental safety. And I think those were the, those were the key points. They have submitted the letters from IFW and all the letters for the natural resources and things like that, and approvals from DEP and the Army Corps. So, yeah, so I can go over the conditions of approval. So Berwick Solar shall submit the energy production from the solar farm within six months from the startup of energy production. This will establish a baseline. And then 30 years from now, we will have the right to request the energy production and once it reaches 10%, which essentially means it's reached its useful life, they will have a year to implement the decommissioning plan and then if it's not implemented, they're now in violation of the plan and then they'd be subject to land use fines at that point. So that, that's our prediction from the, the array becoming blight 30, 40, 50 years down the road. Other than that.
Okay. All right, who's representing the applicant tonight?
This is Zach Gordon, Jay Conroy, and Gil Paty from DHB.
All right, thanks for being here. Do you have anything you want to mention to the board?
You know, I think we've, I think we covered most of the topics over the last two meetings. This project is, you know, an effort to develop a two and a half megawatt AC solar project. It's gonna be a part of Maine's, reaching the state of Maine's environmental goals during construction, create jobs, and you know, it's a really unobtrusive land use. It's gonna be there. We heard the feedback loud and clear from the residents that were participating that, you know, the landscaping plan as it was, was not, was not to their, you know, to the measure that they hoped it would be, so we went and we updated it to make it look more natural, to even increase the tree heights, and so we're really making an effort here to be good neighbors and to, to develop a project that meets all of the Berwick, Town Berwick Land Use Ordinances. That's really it. I think our, the material we've submitted speaks for itself and we're happy to keep moving forward hopefully.
All right. Nicole?
Thank you, sir. So I just wanted to point out, I mean, we've, I've read everything that the abutters have submitted and everything on this application. I'm really big on the comp plan because that's what we adhere to, so I just wanted to point out a couple of parts of the comp plan. One is, we have a policy for energy and communications and that is to allow private citizens in Berwick to develop innovative energy facilities and systems that meet and maintain environmental and aesthetic standards for noise height and wildlife maintenance. And so we have standards and as far as I can see, those are being met through the plan. And then just another thing is about buffering that's also in the land use ordinance and it just says that the ordinances should be done as necessary to provide visual screening between commercial and other land uses such as residential, non-residential, and institutional buildings. I was on a walk yesterday with my son in historic New Market, New Hampshire. He was metal detecting, he's an avid metal detector. And we were walking in, on this old farmland property and there were some trees and a rock wall next to me and I'm paying zero attention to anything, just walking along with the dog and the kid, and all of a sudden, there is a, there was a solar panel next to me and I only saw the solar panel that was 40 feet away from me maybe, when I came to up, an area where the trees had gotten really tall. So I actually took pictures of it because I was so surprised that there was a solar panel there, it snuck right up on me. And that actually, it was great, it was like it was meant to be because it kind of gave me more visualization of what exactly is going to be there, what actually provides screening for solar panels, and it's kind of the shorter, scrubbier stuff, not tall trees. And that's just from my, my little walk yesterday. I do just want to point out that, yeah, that land was cut in like 2017, 2018, it was almost clear cut. I thought they were gonna put a subdivision in there and I'm actually glad to see that it's not 40 houses and all that traffic going in there. And that, the town is also looking to do a similar project downtown, so I don't know if everybody knows about that, but the land over by the Estabrook School, that's why they wouldn't earmark it for a park for us, because they want to put in a ton of solar panels, so I hope that if you have problems with solar panels on 236, you still have problems with solar panels in downtown Berwick. That's all.
Okay, David?
I don't actually, most of mine were answered last week.
Okay, Michael?
Or last meeting.
No, I'm all set.
I got Frank. Okay, I'll just read it verbatim. He says, "Thank you for providing the sales map with classifications. He likes the landscaping, but the aerial photograph shows that most of the bigger trees are the, are the abutters," meaning, I guess, they're the abutters trees. "A combination of the trees with the proposed landscaping should satisfy..." abutters, I guess. "A combination of the trees with proposed landscaping should satisfy..."
James, you should have translated this before, you know Frank's emails.
"Has, has the legal frontage to Route 236 been resolved via easement of, in the lease agreement, by license or other legal means? Can it sunset when solar lease is up? I would suggest, Frank would suggest, two additional conditions. The property owner must merge Lot 6A with the out third lot to resume, so only two lots, 6 and 6A, and that any outstanding fees, penalties, or other municipal charges are paid in full prior to issuance of the permit."
Prior to issue of what permit?
Probably a certificate of occupancy, I'd imagine.
Any, any penalties?
He's referring to tree growth penalties.
Tree growth was paid by the, I mean, before Mr. Bodwell purchased this property, the tree growth was paid, so, because the, because the land was cut before he purchased it, before he purchased it. So that's actually a non-issue, that's a moot point.
Les? He's beeping.
Somebody's beeping.
Well, it'd be easy enough for me to look into, I'd sit right next to Karen.
It wouldn't have, it wouldn't have, they wouldn't have been able to cut, it was the previous owners that cut all of it. They wouldn't have been able to cut it and then close on it without that being taken care of, so that's, I think, a non-issue.
Zach, did you want to talk about that, the road frontage issue that Frank brought up on that?
I, I think Les and I have been talking about it. I might defer to Les. Les, do you want to, do you want to cover this about the plan for the lots?
Sorry, I, I lost my audio here for some reason.
Okay, so, so I believe the, I believe that the, the concept is gonna be, okay, I think we lost Les. I believe the concept is gonna be, that there's gonna be a lot line adjustment and that Lot 6, the lot line of Lot 6 will be moved into Lot 6A. So if, for example, let's say that the two of them together are 100 acres and 50 acres is Lot 6, and Lot 6A is 50 acres, in the, moving forward, Lot 6 will be 80 and Lot 6A will be 20, based on that change in the lot line. Those are, those are made up numbers, but that's the concept.
Actually, I got my audio back, but no video, but I can answer that, so, yeah, so lots, this, this entire solar farm is going to be on Lot 6. We're going to do a lot line change to Lot 6 from an abutter to make Lot 6 big enough to encompass the entire, we actually answered this at the last meeting, but that, that's what will happen, so it will be Lot 6 that this solar farm is on.
But you have to make, Les, you have to make that lot line adjustment first?
I'm not sure what...
Well, he had said in a previous meeting that he's waiting for approval to do any lot line, he's not gonna adjust the lot lines unless he has approval.
Right, right, so I think what Frank suggested, which is, which is fine with us, is that we make that a condition of approval, that we do that lot line adjustment.
Okay. James, you want to write that down and translate it so we can add that to the conditions of approval of number three, if we do vote on this tonight?
Yep.
All right, does anybody else have anything from, anybody from the board have anything else for the applicant?
No. All I have to say is that it's an approved use and I think they've done a good job of screening it.
Well, before we move here to move on this application, you know, I appreciate the abutters coming out. You know, I couldn't imagine living 70 years in one area, in one house, and enjoying nature across the street every day and then having somebody come in and buy that lot and then wanting to put, whether it's 30, a 30-unit subdivision or a solar farm, it's gotta be very disheartening, I understand that, and it's gonna be a big change. Unfortunately, according to the land use ordinance, this is something that can go in there, it's gonna have very little impact to the residents that live there, I think a lot less impact than as if the applicant went and put in 10 houses back there. There's no drain on the school system, there's no drain on public services, and there's also, it's gonna bring in tax money to the town and it's not another marijuana cultivation or pot shop. So finally, we have something that's moving into the town that is gonna be able to generate some very static, static tax revenue.
It's not one of the three Ps. Pot, pizza, what was it?
Pot shops.
Pot shops.
So what does the board feel about moving forward tonight and voting on this application?
I think I'm ready to vote.
Okay, so, three things that we would do tonight, we would approve the findings of the facts, then we also approve the conditions of approval, and then we would also approve the application. So first would be the findings of fact.
Has everybody had a chance to look at them?
I looked at them a couple days ago.
Yeah.
Well, then I move that we approve the findings of fact for Berwick Solar Farm LLC.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by David, all right. Further discussion, okay, roll call, vote, Nicole?
Yes.
Mike LaRue?
Yes.
David Ross Lines?
Yes.
And I vote yes, that's 4-0. Conditions of approval, we have three conditions of approval. First one, I'll read them. Berwick Solar LLC shall submit the energy production of the solar farm within six months from the startup of energy production of the solar farm for the purpose of establishing a baseline energy production level. Number two, starting June 1st, 2050, if the solar farm produces 10% or less energy production of the baseline level, the property owner shall implement and finish the decommissioning plan within one year. And James, can you please read number three?
All right, pretty simple, I just said Lot 6 and 6A shall be merged prior to receiving a building permit.
Okay, those are the three conditions of approval, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Hold on, James, how Les said that, he seemed like he wasn't gonna merge them, he was gonna, he was just gonna change the line, so.
Well, hold on, Mike, just for parliamentary rules here, Roberts rules of orders, we have a, we have a motion unless Ms. Specter would like to withdraw.
Well, we can second it and discuss it.
I will second it.
Hello?
This was not the public.
I will second it. All right, go ahead, Mike, open up for discussion.
Is this not the public hearing?
No. Okay, so how Les was saying is he wasn't gonna just merge it all together, he said he was gonna adjust the lot lines, so I thought we were gonna agree on adjusting, the condition of approval would be accepting it and then he would have to, not merge, but adjust the lot line. And then he would have to, not merge, but adjust the lot lines.
Okay.
Les?
That, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, gotcha. So, so, um, there, there shall be a lot line adjustment from lots?
Six to 6A.
Okay.
Can you write that down so we have it exactly? Do you want to withdraw your motion?
Sure. Motion withdrawn.
Okay.
So it'd be, okay, I'll write down it.
My email, my email, my email. Just like, hey, I, I thought we'd get a chance to speak.
Can we mute them?
James?
Hello?
Man, we, we closed the public hearing two weeks ago.
Hello?
James?
We were to-
Yeah, so I mean, any-
We closed the public hearing two weeks ago. We allowed them the opportunity to speak. Could you please read that condition?
Yep, so it would be prior to receiving a building permit, there shall be a lot line merger, so.
The entire solar farm is encompassed Lot six, is what Les said.
Right, and then has frontage on Route 236.
Okay. Is that what you have?
I think you want to use the word adjustment rather than merger?
Yeah, but there shall be, there shall be a lot line adjustment for Lot six for, yeah.
Okay. Three of the motions.
I move to approve the conditions of approval as read.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Seconded by Michael LaRue. Further discussion? All right, roll call, vote, Nicole Fecto?
Yes.
Michael LaRue?
Yes.
David Ross Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's four, zero for conditions of approval. Finally, application, we're voting application approved this evening on this. Yes or no? Do we have a motion?
I will move that we approve the application for the conditional use permit for Burwick Solar LLC on Route 236.
Okay, we have a motion by Nicole.
I'll second.
Seconded by David. Further discussion? Roll call, vote, Nicole Fecto?
Yes.
Michael LaRue?
Yes.
David Ross Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, the application is approved. I'm sorry, we closed, I, I'm sorry, I know there's the abutters that are here. We closed the public hearing two weeks ago on this. So we, we got, we got your info, we have your letters that have been added to the file. I, I apologize. I understand that you are not happy and they are not on here right now anymore. So I am not talking to them. It's a tough one, I understand. I, I completely understand. All right, next on the agenda, the last in old business, site plane amendment, Commercial Storage, 387 School Street. It's map R54, Lot four. It's in the R2 zone. The applicant is PK Storage LLC. I see that we have Neil on here for the applicant and I'll turn it over to James.
So since the last meeting, we had a site walk. It was a pretty, pretty simple site walk. We got to see the back portion of PK Storage. Right now, it's, uh, it was the remnants of a sawmill. Pretty grass, grassed area. There's some stormwater treatments towards the back of it. And I believe the request from the last meeting was just a clarification on the, how close it is to the wetland and it doesn't need any further permitting. And we did receive a letter from Lucian from DEP. And he said that the project does not directly or indirectly impact the wetlands. And Lucian said that the wetland determination from the previous permit, from the previous approval remains the same.
Okay. Neil, did you have anything else that we didn't cover at the site walk?
Um, no, I think we covered everything. Uh, the one thing that's, that, you know, Paul really wants to emphasize that he's, he's in agreement that he needs to get all those lights in a conformance and, and get those to a shielded light so there, you know, bulbs viewable from the street. And, uh, like he said, I mean, he really wanted to have it done for you guys tonight, but he'll hopefully have those, you know, selected by this weekend and have them all in by next week. But as far as everything else goes, there haven't been any changes since the last presentation. So unless you have any question, but.
You know what really drives this board crazy is lights and shielding.
Oh.
We drive around at night and look at lights. We talked, we spent a lot of time talking about lights.
I don't do that. You guys drive around looking at lights.
Please, please make sure that you tell your client that, you know, this is something I know that Jennifer will be keeping an eye on and she does get phone calls from us from time to time, so.
He takes it, he, Paul was taking it very seriously, so it was good.
All right, so there have been three waivers approved for this. The soil investigation, the landscape plan, and the financial capacity. This is already an established business. The landscape plan.
I can't even see it.
You can't even see it from the road. And the soil investigation, I mean, is, it's not disturbing much land back there.
And the DEP's reviewed it anyway.
And the DEP's, correct. So we have, um, three, we can move forward with this application tonight or we can move it forward to the next meeting, but we have findings of facts.
No conditions.
So the first motion would be for approval of the findings of facts.
I move that we approve the findings of facts for PK Storage at 387 School Street.
Okay. We have a motion by Nicole?
I'll second.
David got you first. So motion, uh, seconded by David Ross Lyons. Further discussion? Okay, roll call, vote, Nicole Fecto?
Yes.
Michael LaRue?
Yes.
David Ross Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's four, zero. There's no conditions of approval proposed, so next would be the application being approved.
I move that we approve the application for the conditional use permit for PK Storage at 387 School Street.
Okay, motion by Nicole?
I'll second.
Seconded by Michael. Further discussion? Roll call, vote, Nicole Fecto?
Yes.
Michael LaRue?
Yes.
David Ross Lyons?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that's four, zero. Okay, so thank you, Neil.
It's great, thanks. Have a good day.
Okay, I'm sure we will. Next on the agenda, we're almost at the end here. Next on the agenda is the findings of fact for the right homesteading.
So the, the findings of fact had already been approved. Frank wanted to discuss about the actual details about the findings. And with the absence of him being here, I just, I, I can, I can take it off, offline with him. But other than that, I mean, I, I think the findings are what they, what they are, what they are, unless he can convince me otherwise.
And we approved them.
Right. And then, I guess, what I would do is once it's approved, because there's a little other details that get input, finish them, send them to Frank and he had other, other, he wanted to see other things. So I don't think we have to get into it tonight.
Perfect.
And we can't discuss the application anymore without the applicant present. It's already been voted and approved.
Yeah, it would just, it would just be, it would have to be the formality of what was, yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
All right, thank you, James.
Thank you, sure.
Next on the agenda is another round of public comment. Public comment session's open to any resident or property owner to come forward and talk about anything under the purview of the planning board if they feel they want to come forward and talk about. We can't address any questions if there's no applicant in the room.
Yeah.
So public comment session's open.
Hi, Heidi Levy, Love and Perry's Way. It's more of a generic question. I don't even know if you're the appropriate, I guess, board. If so, forgive me and I'll bring it elsewhere. When we voted, I don't know how you guys, on this marijuana frontage, Route nine, Route four ballot, I interpreted that question of Route nine, Route four being the locations of marijuana use, retail or cultivation being on Route nine or Route four. And there's a document online somewhere, it has yellow highlights in it with little asterisks and then it says conditional approval. And the way I'm interpreting that is that that it really can be in any zone in the town, which I never really understood when voting. So I just don't understand how it came about that with conditional approval, we can have marijuana retail or cultivation in any zone. And this, what we talked about earlier tonight can really happen to any resident in, in, in the town.
James, can you pull that, can you pull that up in the land use ordinance?
Yeah, I, I know, yeah, I know. I mean, I can, yeah, I'd be happy to talk about it. So it's only, it's not allowed in R1, R2, Aqua for Protection, Limited Residential Resource Protection. It's only allowed, medical storefronts are allowed downtown. And that was one of the first things when it was first allowed under dispensaries. It was allowed just downtown. And then growing, medical growing was allowed in the RCI zone. So I actually have it in here.
But did that ever go to the ballot?
Yeah.
Everything is going to the ballot, yeah.
There was something in there that caught us on surprise.
Yeah, I think it was the actual, the storefronts being allowed downtown.
No, no, it was that, well, it was that. And there's a proposal now to, to just have one allowed downtown for the time being. But there was something with, could you go to, our, in the RCI zone on Route four, you don't need to have frontage on Route four. And that's what took us by surprise. I was saying, why did that one slip? On Route nine, you can be out in R2, R3. You have to have frontage on Route nine. I thought that when we spent those long hours and long nights, that we said frontage on Route four.
Right.
Because when an application, an application one time came to us, I said, this can't be allowed. And we looked, I talked to you, we talked to Southern Maine Planning and said, it, it can.
Well, because the, I, with our close proximity to these rout, routes, I paid careful attention to kind of the wording. And I, like I said, this all in, it just became to be such a big surprise that that, it was actually permitted without the frontage. And, you know, it's like, we're all, you know, really educated people. So I just would urge for future, I'm in the pharmaceutical business and we have to write documents to a certain level of health literacy so that they're about a sixth grade reading level, like package inserts, informed consents and things like that. So just really take into consideration, I'm not sure of the proper term for town literacies, but you know, just the general letters. So I, you know, I just, because I, you know, I, I mean, there's a master's degree there, a master's degree there, a master's degree there, a master's degree there. I don't know about these two, but you know, it's like.
I understand.
It's like if we are having trouble, then I would think that.
Well, every six months, we go through the land use ordinance and we get comments and, and feedback from people in town. We take that into consideration. We work with town staff and there's, we have a list. We keep a list of things that we think we should probably change. And that's why every six months, when you go to vote, there's a new land use ordinance. And nobody looks at it before they vote on it and they just say yes. Some people say no, but it always passes. It's available and then people are surprised.
Yeah.
And as much as we have our head in that, you know, that's like some, you know, late nighttime reading for us. But it's sometimes stuff surprises us that we missed.
No, I under, it's a tough, yeah, it's a tough, tough thing to do. I get it. But I just was kind of curious how that all came about.
Okay.
I'd be happy to keep talking about it. And I've mentioned it before, but I'm trying to recruit, recruit this neighborhood for comp planning. If they wanted to pretty much write the part of their neighborhood or the RCI zone. I will be reaching out for comments just so we can design that zone. Because it's you guys that should drive it.
Yeah, I do peer reviews every day for engineering firms, multi-million dollar, you know, multi-million dollar projects. So I know how this all works.
I had a feeling, sure, public comment session?
One, one, one comment. I'd like to-
Just make sure that you're on mic so they can pick you up.
One comment I'd like to make, this, I'm Jerry Gravo from Ten Pond Road. Michael LaRue made a comment about the site walk, about the horse manure smell that day. I agree, there was a smell that day, but it was not from the horses. Because I own the property from which the horses are located. It was, the Dunn Farm was spreading manure that day. But as of September first, the horses will be gone and the barn's coming down, so it's a non-issue.
Okay. Yeah, I think he was just using that as an example of how odors can emanate.
But I've been there thirty-one years and I've never had a complaint. And the occupant who's leasing the land with the horses takes everything away a couple of times a year. So there's nothing left.
Yes, sir.
I think this would be more in a town decision.
Can you make, can you state your name and address?
Chris Mace, yes. 386 Portland Street. I think this should be more in a town decision. This should be a neighborhood decision because the effects that this is going to have in the neighborhood is beyond words. It doesn't affect the rest of the town as far as their lifestyle goes. And if another thing too, if that gets taxed high, there's some big money-making business, our taxes are going to go up too. But this should be more of a neighborhood decision, whether you want it in there or not, because it's going to destroy the neighborhood. And that affects people's lives. It's not just a, a simple thing. And to them, this is strictly money to them, but this is our lives. So I can say.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment session? Okay, informational items, anything from the board before we move to adjournment? James, do you have anything?
No.
Michael?
No.
David?
Nope.
Okay, next on the agenda is the adjournment?
Do a motion that we adjourn tonight's planning board meeting.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.